I call the April 29, 2024 council meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
I'm here.
Okay. Dr. Lee?
I was wondering there for a minute.
Dr. Lee?
Here. Okay, we have a quorum present and can continue with the meeting. Please stand and join me in prayer and then with the pleasure of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all you have given us and the many blessings in our lives. Our prayer today is that your will be done in this meeting. Shift our perspectives to see you first. Bless those that are here today, bless this city and our guidance. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to public comment portion of our meeting and recognize anyone who has signed up to speak. See that we have one person that has signed up and that is Jay Wright. Mr. Wright, would you come forward? Please state your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Jay Wright and I live at 146 P.A. Johns Road. I'm the Republican candidate currently running to replace Commissioner Craig to represent District Four. I am speaking to you this evening about the new Publix grocery complex. There's a grave concern that I have about the proposed traffic plan for the complex. This development is unique in the fact that the property itself sits in the city. One access is on Log Cabin Road, which is a county road, and another access is on Highway 441, which falls under GDOT jurisdiction. The concern I have is with the 441 exit from the complex. According to a GDOT statistic published in a Union Recorder article in March of 2023, approximately 23,000 cars per day pass by this location. The intersection of Highway 441 and Log Cabin Road is one of the most dangerous intersections in the county. The Publix complex has a left turn exit with a stop sign just up the hill from the red light on 441. This stretch of road heading north starts with a curve and then a downhill slope where cars are already speeding down the hill trying to make the red light before, or the light before it turns red. In the event that a car gets hit while making that left turn, the brunt of the impact would most likely occur in the driver's side door and has a strong potential for fatality. I am not sure why this was allowed to begin with, but I can assure you that when lives are lost, and I can almost guarantee that if this exit is allowed to open, lives will be lost. The blood of those killed or injured will be on your hands for not standing up to GDOT. I am here tonight to implore each of you as our city leaders to protect your constituents by reaching out to GDOT in a united front as your counterparts in the county leadership have already done, to do whatever it takes to persuade GDOT not to allow this left turn exit onto 441 to open. I beg of you to take the necessary steps to protect my family, your family, and each and every member of our beautiful community. Thank you and God bless. And I have a copy of the letter that the county sent.
I've got it.
You've already got it?
I've seen it on the computer.
Thank you.
I got a copy, got the J. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I do indeed, keeping.
You all have received copies of the March 26, 2024 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? If not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion to adopt.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Do we have any comments from the mayor?
Mr. Griffin?
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to shift locations for the next few presentations. We have some proclamations for different people in the audience. Okay. The first presentation is to declare Earth Day in the city of Millisville. At our last council meeting, members of Keep Millisville, Baldwin Beautiful asked us to proclaim Earth Day to highlight how wonderful and fragile our ecosystem is and the importance of keeping it clean and litter free. Because of Keep Millisville, Baldwin Beautiful's exhaustive work, it is so appropriate to not only join in with celebrating the many Earth Day festivities and tree planting ceremonies taking place across our nation, but to use this opportunity to once again highlight the quiet and constant dedication of the members of KMBB and the role they play in promoting and maintaining beauty and cleanliness in our public spaces. They keep litter visibly invisible for all of us to enjoy. I invite anyone who wishes to come up to the front to join me as the clerk reads the Earth Day proclamation.
Proclamation, Office of the Mayor of the City of Millisville, Georgia. Where planet Earth holds a unique position in the universe, not because it's location in the spirals of the Milky Way, not because of its massive size, extreme gravitational pull, or one-of-a-kind stardust. Earth is unique because it nurtures the only place in our vast universe that we humans know that life exists. And whereas the grand details of life on this planet, including our own, rest in a delicate balance of many well-engineered and complex sets of ecosystems that depend on each other for stability, sustenance, and longevity. And whereas each year we are reminded that the millennia of man has taken a grave toll on the delicate balance of life, and each year we are also reminded that all of us are the stewards of life, we are the protectors of our planet, and we are the champions of nature. And whereas each of us is duty-bound to protect our planet as the precious jewel that it is, to respect life as it has been given to us, and to fear the result of an unbalanced biosphere. Now therefore, I, Mary Parham Copeland, as Mayor of the City of Millisville, do hereby proclaim Monday, April 22, 2024, as Earth Day in the city of Millisville, and encourage all citizens to do everything in their power to promote a healthy and prosperous earth.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
The second proclamation comes at the request of the Exchange Club, who every year takes on the valiant task of educating families in our community about the horrors some children endure due to neglect and abuse. They also take on the mammoth task of educating families affected by neglect and abuse on ways of breaking those terrible cycles. Exchange Club members also provide valuable information on the support programs available, including those provided by the Department of Family and Children's Services. I invite the members of the Exchange Club and DFACs to join me up front as the clerk reads the proclamation.
Whereas thousands of Georgia children live in fear of physical harm or are going without life's basic necessities due to neglect. And whereas many parents who do not understand the way children develop need to be supported and taught the right way of caring for their children. And whereas the National Exchange Club and its local affiliate, the Millisville Exchange Club, have embraced the mission of the prevention of child abuse in our nation and community. And whereas in April of each year, the Millisville Exchange Club joins in the National Observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month. And whereas the Millisville Exchange Club is sponsoring their Pinwheel for Prevention campaign, including Wear Blue for Child Abuse Prevention on each Monday in April, with child abuse prevention awareness information being made available across social media platforms. And whereas these promotions and events serve as reminders to all parents and adults that the protection of our children is one of the greatest responsibilities we have as a community of responsible citizens. Now therefore, I, Mary Parham Copeland, as Mayor of the City of Millisville, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2024, as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Millisville, and urge our citizens to help protect our children by reporting suspected abuse and neglect and supporting parents in nurturing their children.
Thank you, Bo, and thank you for, especially for the children and the families. She has some things she'd like to pass out to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Seen those and actually wondered what they were. Thank you.
And these are pinwheels. If everybody would take them and decorate the community, whether they're by your mailbox or at your business, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our third proclamation is to declare Fair Housing Month in the city of Millisville. As many already know, I have great concerns about our residents and young families in particular having good and affordable housing. Attracting and keeping community builders is a cornerstone to the success of Millisville. Good attitudes and the fairness of property owners during the sale or rental of property goes a long way to ensuring that equality and diversity are promoted and maintained in all aspects of real estate in our city. And as a city of civility, this falls right in line with the direction we are moving in the city of Millisville. I invite those here, I think they're already here, for the Fair Housing Month proclamation to join me as the clerk reads the proclamation.
Whereas April 11, 2024 marks the anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, and national origin. And whereas fair housing is a positive for the good of the community. And whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. And whereas fair housing is integral to the ethical commitment of members of the National Association of Realtors and the Middle Georgia Association of Realtors, and is critical to the ability of all real estate professionals to serve their clients, customers, and communities. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore, I, Mary Parham Copeland, as Mayor of the City of Millisville, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2024, as Fair Housing Month in the city of Millisville to establish the city of Millisville as an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promote appropriate activities by private and public entities intended to provide or advocate for the, advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents in our community.
Thank you, Bo. Tonight, we start the process of budget adoption, the budget adoption process by beginning with departmental reports from Fire Rescue and from Human Resources. I have been told that the Police Department presentation originally scheduled for tonight will be postponed. So we will recognize Chief Collier for the Fire Department's presentation.
It's okay. You can work around.
They may need those pinwheels.
They're not going to strike. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mayor Pro Tim, City Council Members, and City Manager. We want to certainly thank you for giving us an opportunity to present the needs of your fire department. Accompanying me tonight is Battalion Chief David Ushry, of whom you are very much familiar. He is a shift commander as well as he manages buildings and grounds maintenance. In your budget presentation, the annual budget request, you may find that there are some areas that are highlighted in that presentation. Those highlights are a reflection of the cost that is going to be needed as we move forward in this particular upcoming year. They're just a reflection of the cost of living, inflation rates, and the cost of doing business for those particular areas. That is in those pages there, the annual budget request, which are highlighted. But before I transition to another thought, let me read our vision, our mission, our core values. The vision of Millisville Fire Rescue Services is meeting the current and the future needs of the city. By anticipating the needs of public fire safety protection, we embrace the community's future plans and the emerging industry trends. Our mission is to protect life, protect property, protect the environment. That mission is accomplished through highly-trained, professional, competent firefighters whose knowledge, skills, and abilities are ever-evolving through professional development. The core values are the foundation upon which we build the strength and the dependability of your department. They are competency, professionalism, diversity, community focus, and teamwork. Our initiatives are healthy employees, honoring our retirees, youth investment, excellent professional decorum, and a modern staffing model. We are requesting this evening a retitling of several positions. You are very familiar with this, this is something that you guys have similarly done for the Police Department. The Community Risk Section or the Fire Marshal's Office, we are asking that that position be retitled to Battalion Chief. It is a reflection of the current times. It is a reflection of the little work that the individual or individuals in that area do. Twenty years ago, Millisville, you know better than I, its work in terms of inspection was not the weight and the work that it is currently. So we're simply asking that position to be retitled to Battalion Chief. Currently, the person in that position is on a Battalion Chief's pay grade. So there is no monetary exchange there, there's no increase in cost. Similarly, there are six lieutenant positions that we would like to be retitled to First Lieutenants. Those lieutenants manage or lead in the two fire stations. We have nine lieutenant positions, but on shift, someone has to be directing the shift. So we're asking again for those positions to be retitled. What you're gonna, what that does is provide a clear delineation in terms of command and structure. Again, that would be non-budgetary to do that, to make that decision. Also asking that the Assistant Chief's position, which has been defunded, to be allocated and sourced again. Currently, we have a flat command structure. You have a Fire Chief, then you have four Battalion Chiefs. There is no Deputy Chief or Assistant Chief in between. By doing that, now you have Fire Chief, Assistant Chief, Battalion Chiefs, Captain, First Lieutenant, Lieutenant, Sergeant, and Firefighters, giving you a clear command structure. Everyone appropriately in their particular role and able to carry out their functions in their particular roles and their clear responsibilities and delineations in that role. By reinstating that, that's what you gain. I'm also asking a pay increase for none other than myself. Whether we go back as far as 2018 or if we just reflect on the last 12 months, one of the things that we are certainly glad to report tonight, that when you look at retention and you look at turnover, we've always kept a high percentage rate. Currently, we have five to six vacancies within a department. I anticipate by July, every position to be filled. The way that we are able to do that is unlike in the past, many departments would open up applications maybe annually, once a year or twice a year. We don't do that. The times that we're living in, you cannot do that. You have to adjust with the current times, adjust with the way employees and employers work now. So we keep our application processes open all the time. And we are consistently training and developing, whether it's a recruit to get to a certified state or whether it's an incumbent that has been promoted, getting them the skills necessary for them to be able to properly occupy positions that they've been promoted to. So that's part of the reason I'm asking for that for myself. The department is strong and it is moving in a positive direction. And certainly, we want to be able to maintain that momentum and keep moving in the direction that we're moving and building upon the gains that we've already accomplished. I am going to defer at this point to Battalion Chief Ushry, but I want to come back and conclude and discuss a capital item, certainly that has been presented before, that is the purchase of an aerial ladder and the development of burn building, burn site, for us to be able to properly train on a consistent basis and not necessarily have to rely upon our neighbors or our partners in public safety. Chief Cusack?
I'm gonna go to the podium.
That's all right.
As long as you don't preach.
Okay. Try not to do that. All right. Thank you, Chief Collier. I want to thank you, Mayor, and Ms. Shinholster, Pro Tim, City Manager, City Council Members, even you, Bo, thank you for the accomplishments of last year. All the administrators, sometimes he's the most quiet one, but he does a lot of work. I'm here today to speak on two aspects of our 2024-25 budget. Specifically is the salary requests and pay parity. Inflation's still here. If you don't believe me, go grocery shopping. Or like my friend's doing now, go buy a house and tell me inflation's not here. So in your proposal here on pages 13 through 15, I've provided you, or we provided you, the actual pay salaries of Putnam and Baldwin County Fire Rescue. Also, I requested new salaries. Ms. Map, we did this to illustrate the current salary trends. We essentially have been doing fire services on pay study. So we've got actual numbers for you there so you can compare. Keep in mind, these salaries will go up this year. So October 1, Putnam County will increase by 8%. Baldwin County, I believe, they do theirs in January, but I don't know that percentage.
They haven't determined it yet.
Yeah. So what I like to do is, I like to point out some comparisons. So what we've done, we've taken three years of call volumes between the three departments. And so our findings are pretty remarkable from my aspect. Millisville Fire Rescue's call volumes are more than Putnam's. In 2022, our call volumes were more than Baldwin County Fire. What am I saying? Millisville Fire Rescue, we have two stations. We're doing as much work as Baldwin County, who has eight stations, Putnam County, who has five, and they're building a sixth one now. Yet they're still, they're paying their firefighters more. So our requested salaries increases are in line with accurate trends, accurate comparisons. That brings it to my last point, which is pay parity. We are asking to have same pay per rank as the Police Department. I was frankly somewhat surprised or shocked last year that we didn't achieve this goal. We requested last year. The reason being is since the inception of Police and Fire Department, pay parity has, pay parity has, so since the 1800s, pay parity has existed between Police and Fire. That's factual, that's historical. It did not change until the 1960s, which I wasn't around yet, but it was a time in our country, in our nation, we faced the most, largest amount of civil unrest. So they needed more police officers, so they had to increase the pay to recruit more police officers. That eventually corrected itself by 1996. So majority of our country pays our Police and Fire the same. There's no differences. So that raised the question, why don't we have parity? I went even further, I reached out to Americas, Georgia. They are a mirror image of our community. They're a college town, they got the same population, same demographics. They have pay parity. I have those salaries and I spoke with them. I've also reached out to the city of Perry and also Decatur. They have not sent me the numbers, but both are working towards pay parity. But the opinion is, and why we have differences, the opinion is that policing is more dangerous, therefore deserve more, more money. So let's dive into the facts, because I think for you to make a good decision, need to know the facts. The U.S. Department or Bureau of Labor Statistics and Census of Occupational Injuries, they identify the 25 most dangerous jobs in America. Firefighting, number nine. Police, number 22. So we're closer to number one than the police are. I, I, I point that out because I want you to see the realities that we're facing. These are factual studies. There's a reality in fire service, something that we face and you've heard of. I know you have, hey, this is something called the silent killer amongst firefighters. This is because our jobs are very stressful. And so I said, well, let me find some research and data. So the American Heart Association, they did their study on the 25 most stressful occupations in the United States. Number one, you're looking at us, firefighting. Number one most stressful job in the United States. According to the American Heart Association is that police are right there behind us, they're number six. Even though the facts indicate firefighting are more dangerous and more stressful than police, we're not asking for more money, we're just asking you to pay us the same. If you really look at it, public safety would not exist without both of us. So you need both of us to have public safety. Ms. Chambers, this research forced me to think about our pension meeting that you let me sit in on. You are correct. Based off of this cardiac disease that firefighters face because of this high stress, it's called the silent killer, we have heart attacks when we retire, after we leave service. I would encourage you to push or help us to get 20 to 25 years to retire. And if anybody's here that's on the board... And if anybody's here that's on the board, for these studies that I've pointed out, I think we should change or look towards changing our retirement years to, from 30 to 20 or 25 because of these studies. Thank you again for all of your hard work and dedication. I'm really looking forward to 2025. I'm extremely excited about the future of our community. I want to close by saying that this year's theme at Millersville Fire Rescue is focus on excellence. That means that we are focused on the positive and we're not feeding into negativity. Mr. Chambers, I'm not gonna keep picking on you, but last year you made a statement.
Not picking on me.
I like what you said last year, and many of you might have remembered this. Why are we playing follow the leader? The city of Millersville should be where others come to model their organizations. I believe you said, Mr. Chambers, we should be the gold standard. The reason is we're playing catch-up because we never addressed the issues 30 or 40 years ago. But City Council, Mayor, City Manager, by adopting our budget proposal this year, it will move us much closer to that role of Millersville being that leader. Thank you.
I wanted to conclude by certainly presenting our capital request. One is the replacement of ladder one, aerial ladder. But the other one is the funding of a burn building. We're currently working, City Manager, with an older site, the water department used to use as a site to erect a burn building. When you look at what we do, there is something called high-risk, low-frequency. And what that means is that particularly emergency is extremely dangerous and you do not do it frequently. For example, any rescue, any water rescue, that's going to be extremely dangerous. High-risk, low-frequency. You don't build muscle memory because you don't do it enough frequently to build that muscle memory. In the modern fire department, you do not fight enough structural fires to build the level of muscle memory necessary to protect yourself as a rescue officer and to protect someone else. When I started doing this occupation, Lord have mercy, almost 40 years ago now, I can remember having six fires a day. That was in the 1980s. We're not in the 1980s. And that was in an area where some would argue that some of those fires might have been artificially started, I don't know. For some other purposes, I don't know. But when you look at what we do, we've had five structural fires, a fire that can be defined as a structural fire. We're not talking about, you went there 15 minutes. We're talking about going there, literally doing work for a minimum of two hours and pulling in a attack line, some sizable attack line. So if you're only doing that that infrequent, that means that you're not building the level of muscle memory experience that's necessary as a professional firefighter. By developing this site, by funding this project, you are, one, going to be able to now have something of your own where you can train your people to make them as safe as possible while they're in turn making the city as safe as possible. The beauty of this site and this project is that by funding it, you're talking about making a decision that will last 50 years. We've done research and development, several of our training officers, our training officer and several of our members have been out on sites doing research and development of these particular buildings that we're looking at. And on tomorrow, we have an opportunity to sit down and talk with someone about some potential grant funding for the project. But it is something that is indeed necessary. Thank you for this opportunity.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the ISO rating?
Our current ISO rating is three.
A long time ago, I think it's been stopped now, Jimmy can tell me, we had some dilapidated houses that were falling in and we still do. And the fire department was able to use some of those as a training, a place to do the training on those dilapidated houses. Has that been stopped? Or are you still allowed to do that?
We can do that. I am probably going to be discouraging us from doing that because you gotta go in and you gotta prepare the building to do the training. So that will place you in a position where you gotta assume some degree of liability, which probably will not be healthy for us to do.
There's a lot of environmental issues you have to deal with now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, depending upon when the building was built.
The shingles have to be off, the lead paint has to be gone. By the time you get finished making it safe, there's nothing to burn.
You don't give it like one or two times.
That's right. Because I can assure you, I am one of them and we'd love to burn anything.
But, you know, I didn't know whether or not, especially with the land bank starting up and if we have a piece of property that has dilapidated that they end up taking over and it's going to be bulldozed, it could be at least looked at for potential. I understand what you're talking about, the cost of going in and maybe having to do some structural maintenance to make sure it doesn't fall before it even gets going by, you know, things of that nature. But, you know, something to think about anyway.
We could take a look at, but we're definitely, we're definitely gonna err on the side of safety.
Certainly, always. And I'm not saying in, instead of, but in addition to. That's what I'm thinking more of.
Chief, you may want to share with them, because I have not, because I thought you might in this presentation, so I'm gonna give you the opportunity to do that. You spoke of grants. If you would mention that most recent grant that you all got from the state and what it's gonna do.
Right, right, right. We recently got a grant for structural firefighting gear. So we will purchase five sets of turnout gear, which is tremendous. I mean, you're talking about full ensemble turnout gear, it's around $3,000. So we got the grant, we're gonna be able to outfit at least five of our members with new turnout gear. This will be at least the second or third grant opportunity that we've had. I think we have grants from fire sub with the extrication equipment. Almost regularly now, we're getting grant from Walmart. This is a smaller donation that we use for firefighter funds and stuff like that. Now, the meeting that we're having tomorrow, hopefully it will bode well and it will potentially be sizable in terms of aiding with this burn building project. There's also an April decision, a decision this month about monies that we've requested consistently, the purchase of the ladder. So we will know that soon, whether we get to the next phase in the grant process or we die where we are.
Well, I saw in your capital projects list that you said that the site has been donated for the burn building. Is that what you're talking about, where the old water, that's the location? Okay.
Chief, I see here in the requested budget amount for regular employees, the current budget is at 1.8 and then the requested budget is 300,000. That's a, that's a 75% decrease. Surely this must be a typo.
That's an increase, an increase.
Oh, that's a request of, okay, so you're highlighted here is.
Which would be 2.1 now.
Okay, okay. I understand, okay.
Yeah, we were, we were gonna hug him in a minute.
Officer, you messed that up.
I'll just make sure I was reading this correctly. Okay, so these are the amounts above.
You get two burn houses.
So each of these that are highlighted is the additional amount requested on top of the current budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate the clarification.
Are there any more questions, Dr. Lee? Ms. Matt?
Not right now. We're looking at other.
Well, I'd like to thank you, Chief Collier, Chief Ushry, for your presentation.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good presentation, thank you.
And before Ms. Witherspoon comes up, I'd like for her to announce that the mayor is listening to the meeting and she's on the phone, listening to the meeting tonight. She wanted to make sure that you all knew that she was listening in. So now I'll recognize Ms. Witherspoon for Human Resources' presentation.
And then I may say something while she's coming up.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Witherspoon. When you came in, I mean, you just transitioned so smoothly. We appreciate you.
My voice, my voice, man?
No.
Of course.
My voice isn't as boisterous, that's chief. I'm gonna need the aid of the microphone here. I'm going to speak to you tonight about the Human Resource Department here and what we are looking for within the 24, 2024, 2025 budget from the city of Millersville.
It may have just a slight delay, so.
Okay, that's fine. I want to give you a look at what our current metrics are for our employees in the city of Millersville. We currently have 192 employees. Of that, 148 are male and 44 are female. During the 2023-2024 budget, we were authorized for 229 positions, which means we currently have a vacancy of 37 employees. The majority of those vacancies are located within police and fire. Public Works has a small amount of vacancies in there and wastewater and water plant. Those four departments make up the 37 vacancies that we currently have. Our new hires and terminations for the previous year, beginning July 1st, 2023 year to date, we have hired 41 employees for the city of Millersville. We terminated 28 of them. Well, 28 employees, not 28 of the 41.
I was gonna say, wait a minute.
28 employees.
And I want to be very clear, Sandra uses the term termination when they're no longer working for the city of Millersville for whatever reason.
That sounds good.
I think it's a HR thing.
Yeah, it works for me.
So of those 28 terminations, eight of those were voluntary, where the employee decided to leave their position and either pursue other avenues of employment. 12 of those terminations were involuntary, where we felt that the relationship between us as the city of Millersville and that particular employee was no longer beneficial to either of our interests. Five were retirees. We have one deceased employee and two other terminated employees were rehired back at the city of Millersville. And they left when they were terminated, they left voluntarily on good terms, so we were able to rehire them back into their, into a position. Our turnover rate, as I said, we had 28 terminations divided by our 192 employees, which gives us a turnover rate of 14%. We are a little bit below, just below, the national average for local government employees, which is 15% turnover rate. The main reason that people are leaving basically is looking for new opportunities, thinking the grass is greener on the other side most of the time, and some are just, just leaving. Of our 192 employees, I've broken out to you our age group of the employees currently employed by the city of Millersville. Age group 20 to 29, we have 30 employees within that age group and that represents 16% of our workforce. The next two, 30 to 39 and 40 to 49, 45 employees in each of those correspondingly relating to 23% of our workforce. 50 to 59, we have 42 employees representing 22% of our workforce. And 60 to 69, we have 29 employees representing 15% of our workforce. And we have one employee that's 70 and above. So as you can see, we are pretty well spaced out as far as age and number of employees. I'm drawing my attention to those within that 60 to 69 age range because those are the employees that we are expecting to retire out of our system relatively soon. And looking for a way to backfill those employees once they do leave so that we will have continuity of service, that we will have a progressive succession plan for those employees that will be retiring out of our city of Millersville employment. All that being said, my objectives for this upcoming year would be to update our employee handbook. We have been doing it piecemeal thus far, but I'm taking a comprehensive look at the whole handbook and updating those sections that need to be updated, revising those sections that need to be revised and doing away with those sections that no longer serve our purpose. Our next objective is to attract and retain qualified employees. And one way that I can see of doing that is posting our openings on the various websites that we have out there. Georgia Local Government Personnel Association has a website. Georgia Rural Water Association for our wastewater and water plant openings. Society of Human Resource Management, they also have a site that we can post job openings on and of course LinkedIn. Pretty sure everyone is familiar with LinkedIn so we can get a good mix of applicants from those various websites. Next objective is to increase employee engagement. We all know employee engagement is very important to the success of any business. If your employees feel engaged, if they feel like they're contributing to the bottom line of any business or organization, they tend to, they tend to do better, for lack of a better word, do better for that particular organization. And one way that I'm going to achieve this is start back up our city of Millersville newsletter where we would use that avenue as a way to recognize our employees throughout each individual department. Also have an employee of the quarter contest where each department can recognize an outstanding employee for going above and beyond. And I'm working out with GMA if that would fall under my wellness grant so I can probably fund some money from that, from our wellness grant. But either way, we're gonna have an employee of the quarter contest. We are going to continue with our wellness grant, focus on seven areas of wellness for our employees, which includes physical, emotional, intellectual, social, environmental, and occupational. Gone are the days where wellness just consists of going to the doctor, getting your yearly physicals, and that's it. We want to look at the whole employee to make sure that we have well-rounded, well-rounded individuals here at the city of Millersville. And in doing that, we're going to increase our focus on lifestyle changes. We were in a meeting today and with the GMA rep and she was telling us that 70% of our claims were attributed to lifestyle change choices. So if we can get to our employees and show them or give them information on how to better manage cholesterol, diabetes, high blood pressure, that will, again, not only make them more healthy. them more healthy, but then also hit our bottom line as far as medical things. And last but not least, with the wellness grant, we are going to promote mental health awareness. As Chief Cawyer was saying, public safety, they have a lot to deal with just in their day-to-day job. I've reached out to GMA, and they have a particular program geared specifically for public safety employees. If they don't want to talk to any of our EAS people, which most employees would rather talk to somebody that's outside of their network, but there is a facility or facilitator that they can contact, and it deals specifically with police and fire. So they are ex-police men, ex-firemen, so they know what they're going through and will be able to assist them. Another objective is to provide relevant training for our employees, which includes the mandated sexual harassment training, first-time supervisor training, customer service training, and ongoing training on what benefits we offer, what they could get out of their coverage. Excuse me, voice. Boom, throat dry. Excuse me. First-time supervisor training is one of the ones that I really want to focus on. Employees moving from an employee over to the supervisor role, there are certain things that now they can and cannot do, can and cannot say, and we want to make sure that they're aware of all the ins and outs of supervisory training. I'm almost done. Employee engagement. As I spoke earlier, employees that feel engaged with their organization, they have a strong relationship in that organization. They will go that extra mile for the employer and the customers that they serve. They will recommend their organization as a good place to work, and they will show up for work, they will get the task done, and they will volunteer ideas to help better that organization. Improved engagement leads to better performance, higher customer satisfaction, and more trust within the organization with which they work. A recent Gallup poll of U.S. local government found 40% of local government employees were invested in their organization. Globally, disengaged employees represent $8.8 trillion in untapped productivity. So I'm looking at the 40%, and I'm thinking to myself, okay, how do you get the other 60% to be as engaged as those 40? Positive employee experience attracts talent. Engaged cultures will attract people from outside the organization who want to join that organization. What happens internally goes external pretty quickly, and that's a double-edged sword. It could be good, it could be bad, so we know bad news travels a whole lot faster than good news.
That's true.
So we want to, we want to make sure that our employees that we have here are engaged with the organization and they're feeling a part of that organization and happy to be working here. When employees believe they will be recognized, they are 2.7 times more likely to be highly engaged. And that takes me back to the newsletter of recognizing our employees for their efforts, employee of the quarter contest, and those things of that nature. And I know that recognition costs money, but I'm going to find ways to do recognition without spending the dime. We will recognize employee achievements at staff meetings, surprise the employee with a handwritten thank you note, something that people don't do too often these days is handwriting notes, compliment the employee with an airshot of other employees. If one employee hears another employee getting complimented, then they, that may boost them up or urge them to do something that would allow them to get complimented as well. Recognize employees in a company-wide newsletter, which takes me back to our implementation of the newsletter once again for the city, and ask employees for input to solve an issue. If employees feel like they're engaging with their department and trying to solve a particular issue, that goes a long way to them as well. So to become an employer of choice, we must build employee engagement by providing positive employee experience, and we must measure that employee experience with actual data, meaning sending out surveys to our employees, asking them for their input as to what we can do better as an employer, and just things that they would like to see down the road to be implemented here at the city of Millardville. As we all know, our employees are our greatest asset, so if we treat them well, they will in turn take care and treat our customers well as also. And that is a quote from Richard Branson. So, getting to my 2024, 2025 budget request, I would just like to increase the printing by $1,000 to $3,000. That would be for the distribution of updated personal policies and procedures manual. The equipment rental increase, increase that by $300 for a total of $2,000. And that would be if the HR department is relocated, that will cover our cost for our equipment rental that we would need. And that would provide like the separation for the HR department, because right now we're next door on the third floor. We share that floor with planning and zoning, code enforcement, and inspections. And at times, well, not at times, well, all times, when you're having HR discussions, that's something that you really need to have a dedicated area for, that's away from everybody else, so. That equipment rental will cover the cost of us getting the, the needed equipment that we would need as far as copy machines or fax machines or whatever. Office supply increase is to be increased by $1,200 to a total of $3,000. Again, if we are separated from the other departments, then we will, again, be responsible for our own office supplies. And this is not an HR budget request, but this is something that many of the employees had come to me and asked me if we would be able to do this this year. They would like the ability to sell 80 hours of vacation time both in November and May. Right now, our vacation time policy states that they can only sell a total of 80 hours between November and May. They can either sell 40 hours in November or 40 hours in May. So what they want to do is be able to sell a total of 80 hours at each offering in November and in May.
Can you say that again?
Right now, we, we have let our employees sell that vacation time. They can sell a total of 80 hours total. We allow, we allow them to do that twice a year, once in November and once in May. But they can only sell a total of 80 hours. So between November and May, they can split it up however they want to, but they can only sell 80 hours between those two months.
Gotcha.
Whereas now, they're wanting to sell 80 hours in November and be able to sell 80 hours in May.
So we're talking about 160?
160 hours.
Don't we have a requirement that they have to have so many hours on the books before they?
Right. When they sell vacation time, they have to have 80 hours remaining on the books, and they also have to have at least 160 hours of sick time.
Before they're allowed to sell.
Right. So if, if somebody comes in and has 85 hours of vacation time and they want to sell 80, they can't do it. They, they have to leave at least 80 hours on the book, and they can only sell in increments of 10 hours. You can't, you can't sell 15. Has to be 10, 20, 30, 40, increments of 10.
When you do the handbook, you said you were going to make some changes in it and upgrade it some. Are you going to make sure that the personnel?
Yes, ma'am.
Book is awesome?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we've had that happen before, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm, any changes or updates that?
That you make on the handbook?
Right. Will be certainly forwarded to that committee so they can take a look at it as well.
Let me ask you one other question about the hours. Okay, so the requirements that you just said a few minutes ago, in order for a person to get those 160 hours, they have to have how many hours? Six, 80 hours?
They have to have 160 hours of sick time.
Right.
And they can only sell in increments of 10 hours, and any vacation time that they sell, they have to make sure that they leave 80 hours on the books.
Well, it's going to be very few people to be able to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, not everybody has to take advantage of it, but just the possibility of it being there for those that can.
Right.
Those are the ones that are asking for it. Any other questions?
Is there any current method for allowing an employee to convert vacation time to sick time or vice versa?
No, sorry. Sick time, when an employee retires, their sick time is converted to service time, meaning that every 177 hours of sick time they have on the books, we credit them one month of service time. Anything else?
I told you, you're John on the spot.
Well, thank you so much for the time. I really do appreciate it.
Presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I just, I'm sorry, my, my, my. Our report's coming up. Hush, Hank, until you're called on.
I guess we'll move to the city manager's report.
And I'm going to be really brief tonight, I promise. What I was about to say was, not that it was not in the past, but I believe in the reports, the presentations that you've seen tonight, and I believe the presentations that you will see throughout the rest of this budget process from these department heads, we, we have an excellent level of professionalism at the city now, and I'm, I'm proud of that. I'm excited about that. These department heads work and they work hard. One of the things that, that Ms. Witherspoon did not mention, but you all passed about middle of this fiscal year, was our positive discipline plan, and that has been a tremendous help in working with our employees who needed a little bit of help to be a little more motivated. And that is really working well, and it is, it is doing what's necessary in order to, to make the folks that are, that are here understand the expectation that we have them for them as far as their productivity is concerned. One of the things that I asked Sandra about today, and I asked her about it too late for her to be able to crunch the numbers, but she's going to do it, and I'm going to give the information to y'all. Y'all saw that we had a turnover rate of 14%, which is just 1% lower than the national average, but I think, I think if we look at our employees from the standpoint of their longevity and the amount of time that they've worked for the city, we're going to find that we have people who have worked for the city, and I'm just guessing, Sandra, keep me out of trouble here, but I suspect we probably have an average tenure of somewhere between 11 to 12 years in terms of employment. Is that probably close? And with the times that we live in now, an 11 to 12% or 11 to 12-year average tenure of employees is pretty unheard of. So I think that speaks well of the fact that the city of Millardville is still a good place to work and that people still recognize it that way, and the professionalism that you've seen tonight from the department heads and what you'll see from the rest of the department heads in the future is just spilling over to our staff, and, and I'm, I'm very excited about that. Very quickly, in terms of my report, I'm not going to go into any detail about the things that you have before you tonight. You've had your book, as you typically do, and I've shared with you some information in my bi-weekly report on the information that you'll be voting on tonight. Most of it is, or actually all of it is pretty straightforward in terms of what the ordinance does and what the resolutions do. I'm just simply going to mention that I have put in your notebook, or for those of you that have already picked your book up, when I did it in your seat on the DIAS, the annual operating budget schedule, adoption schedule, so please take a look at that. I shared with you all in my bi-weekly report and even before that, that we will be working to have call budget work sessions on the Tuesdays, that we do not have council meetings to get through that process. And on the days we have, actually on the 16th, we will now have four presentations on the 23rd during the council meeting, we'll have four. And on the call project work sessions, when we have the budget presentations, that will be the only thing that we do on those days, so that the department's head, heads have the opportunity to fully present to you what, what they would like in their budget. But you have the schedule there, and I would encourage you to take that and just keep it in front of you to, to remind yourself that on our off nights, in terms of scheduled council meetings, we will be doing budget work sessions, probably until, pretty close until we get a budget.
So we've got a meeting from tonight.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah. Till the end of May.
That's right.
I just went through and checked that.
Well, that, that's a, that's a maximum number of meetings. It, it may not take that long, but we know that last year was a, we know last year it was a pretty stretched-out affair because we, we, we made some pretty sizable, or you all made some pretty sizable decisions in terms of salary levels last year, and it took us a little while to work through that, but, and I will be bringing to y'all another spreadsheet on salaries this year for us to look at.
Hope you did. It was good.
Things that we can, I think we can do for this particular year.
5:30, right?
5:30, yes, ma'am. And we will, we will always meet in here for the call work sessions, just because I think this is a little better environment for the department to us while we're sitting in the DIAS. Let me also just remind you that I mentioned to you in my bi-weekly report, we got the request from the county to have a joint meeting to discuss the potential for roundabout at the log cabin, North Jefferson, Sinclair Dam Road intersection. Just keep in mind, if, if, if we are all there, that is a quorum, that'll be a public meeting, we'll need to announce that. My preference would be a week in advance. So as you're looking at dates for that possibility, keep, keep that in mind, and if you would, shoot me what dates work well for you on that, and we can, I can share that with the county manager in terms of some potential dates for that. So that's all I have, Ms. Shinholster.
Okay. Okay, we have a public hearing tonight to consider ordinance O2401-01 to amend the land development code to grant a special use at 701 North Jefferson Street that allows a used car sales lot with 20 cars in a community commercial district. The procedure for conducting this hearing will be as follows. Once it has been determined that this public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the land development code. We would then hear a report from the planning and zoning administrator, including the advisory decision of the planning and zoning commission. Counsel will first hear from the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We would then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we would then give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal, but the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues raised by the opposition. We would then give the opposition the opportunity to speak in rebuttal. They, too, must limit comments to the points or issues raised. Please make sure that before you speak, that you give your name and address for the record. Mr. Clerk, has this public hearing been properly posted and advertised? Mr. Clerk, has this public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, it has been.
I will ask the clerk to read ordinance O-2401-01 by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002 known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millisville, Georgia, the ordinance grants a special use for a used car lot with 20 vehicles located at 701 North Jefferson Street.
I would, we would now recognize the building official for a report.
We're here tonight for an amendment to the land development code for 701 North Jefferson Street. Property is owned by Mr. Nayla L. It's on community commercial, and he desires a special use for a used car lot with 20 cars maximum. The plan is on in committee mid-on this March 4th and pass the unanimous.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this amendment?
I don't think Mr. L. is here.
Okay.
Then I have a question of you, Scott. If he's not present, if the individual is not. A little bit of, of discussion about how we're gonna fit 20 cars on this, it's a big lot, but it's also, I'm assuming it's gonna be cleared, or what, what's gonna happen here?
Do you want to sell a car wash here on Jefferson Street? Across from the old phone house.
Right.
Yes, sir, I believe you could do 10 across in two D.
In front?
In the front, yes.
And still have somebody drive in? Okay.
Okay, so he's not, he's saying a maximum of 20?
He requested 20.
So is he gonna start out with less, or, or is he gonna come in with 20?
I don't know his plans. His realistic plan, I don't know.
Yeah, 'cause I'm, I'm like Mr. Chambers, I, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, I guess that, since he's not planning on removing the building, they're gonna be parked back there and where people usually go in to wash cars, went in to wash cars?
He has converted three of those places into offices.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Plans on just having one open bay for, for...
Detail?
Detail.
I still can't see 20 cars there.
I'd really like to address this because I, I'm concerned about the amount of traffic. We talk about North Jefferson all the time, it's our second most traveled thoroughfare. And that's, that's a busy little section right in there. We already have a good-sized used car lot right above it, and I, we've, we've got a curb cut on the front.
Yes.
But if you're pulling cars all the way to the right-of-way, I don't see that being, you know, an easy way to ingress and egress.
I agree, and if you see, he chained up the exit which goes off on the side street, which gave him a second exit. He's got to chain across there and shut that off.
So it's just gonna be one entrance, that's right off of Jefferson?
He has shut off the second entrance.
Yes ma'am.
So it's enter and exit in the same driveway?
Yes ma'am.
So I'm, I'm just concerned about the, we're concerned about the residents that live across the street, and that's, you know, that's a narrow street, and if people, if he's got his place full of cars, then they're gonna be parking on the street, and, and that may pose a problem for some.
We told him he cannot do, there's no mechanical work allowed 'cause he's within about 100 feet of residence.
Any more questions? I, I, what, I'm, I'm gonna ask the city attorney, what do we usually do when the, the applicant does not show up to provide, you know, information, because we, you know, we can only ask you so much, you can't, you can't have any idea what his plans are?
Well, it is an evidentiary hearing, as you all know, and without the applicant present to present evidence and to answer your questions, the practice, and this, this is a practice, you don't have to do this, but the practice in the past has been to table it until the applicant can appear.
There we go.
And that we, of course, it won't be at the next meeting because it has to be re-advertised, which will be done at the applicant's expense, but that is typically what is done. You could clearly vote it down for lack of presentation by the applicant, but the, the practice, and it doesn't happen very often, thank goodness, but the practice has been to table and give the applicant another opportunity to, to appear.
With no penalty?
With no penalty, right. And that would require a motion and a second vote.
I'll make a motion that we table this until the applicant can appear for the evidentiary hearing.
Second.
Okay, yes ma'am.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott and Jimmy. It has been properly motioned and seconded that we would table this ordinance and this hearing, and this public hearing, until the applicant can be here to present his evidence. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Ma, Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay. Been properly, that, we'll move on from there. We'll move into new business. I'll ask the clerk to read resolution R-2404-20 by caption.
To authorize a contract with Pyro Technico to provide fireworks during the Independence Day celebration in Millisville.
Is there, um, is there a motion to adopt?
Don't move.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
How much is it gonna cost us? Is it the 8,000?
No, 17,500 is the total.
Okay.
Okay. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Walden, uh, Ms. Walden? Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, Bo, continuing on with new business, we have one new alcohol license and one renewal to consider tonight. I'll ask the clerk to present the new application for the public first, for Publix first.
This is for Richard Thomas Burr, District Manager, on behalf of Publix Supermarkets Incorporated, doing business as Publix, or Public Supermarket Incorporated, number 2003, located at 2775 North Columbia Street, and it is for beer and wine, retail package to go, and ancillary beer tasting and ancillary wine tasting, consumption on premise, and Sunday sale, Sunday sales, yeah, consumption on premises.
Are there any questions?
They're gonna do tasting on, in the store?
Yes.
Really?
Kroger had come up with a similar situation, they just never went through with it, but evidently this is something that is done quite frequently in other locations. You tend to buy a little bit more after tasting.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Move we approve?
I'm sorry, I'm thinking about that one. Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
I missed the second.
Ms. Walden.
Now I'm ready. All right, so Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, so now we have a renewal for the Family Dollar Store located at 641 South Wayne Street, and I'll ask the clerk to present the renewal application.
This is renewal for Family Dollar Stores of Georgia LL, doing business as Family Dollar Store, number 2045, located at 641 South Wayne Street, and it's for beer and wine package to go.
Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
To approve?
Second.
In discussion. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
We have two reappointments tonight. The first is to reappoint Calvin Map to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Accordingly, I nominate Calvin Map for reappointment to, to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there a motion to confirm the nomination?
Madam Mayor, just to have clarification, on the agenda, we have a couple of other names, will all of those be as...
Um, well...
Did you do them individually?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, they're not, they're not, that was...
I'm sorry.
...a mistake on there.
Thank you, Walden.
We all have two reappointments.
Only two, so these on...
According to the email, I had a couple of emails on it, but the last one was...
Is Mr. Jones and Goodman or not?
We'll just make those two, and then we can have the other two.
Yvonne Farrell, James Jones, and Lindsey Goodman are all for reappointment. If you all remember, Mr. Map has been serving, and there was some, some conversation and discussion with the previous city manager that...
He had been on there a lot of years.
That, that, to try to turn that board over, that, that maybe he should not be eligible to, to serve again, but Mr. Map is very interested in staying on that board, and as we know, we have trouble getting dedicated citizens to stay. It's purely, purely a, a word play, but I, I chose to say appointments, and his clock kinda starts over if we ever start looking at the possibility of having a, a year range where they can serve. So, Mr. Map, as far as I'm concerned, will be an appointment, and then Ms. Farrell, Mr. Jones, and Ms. Goodman would be reappointments.
Yeah, and I just, as I was going over the agenda, I, that was a different part of the email, so I, I just overlooked it.
Okay, so...
In your, in your comments there, that's how that's not there.
So we're gonna change Mr. Map to an appointment, so I'm gonna nominate Calvin Map for appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals.
Move we approve?
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, so now we have Ms. Yvonne Farrell, James Jones, and Lindsey Goodman for reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. Do we need to do them individually?
You don't have to on the reappointments, it's strictly council's preference.
Okay.
Move we approve en masse?
Wait, give me a moment, 'cause I'm having to catch up here. Okay, so, I'm sorry, so now he made the motion?
I did. Second.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Okay, and we have Don Parker for reappointment to the Allied Arts Board.
Move we approve? Second.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Ms. Shinholster, if I could just remind you all that we still, you all still need to appoint a chair to the Planning and Zoning Commission. There are five members plus the chair on that group, and with Mr. Hill as the vice chair and currently serving as the chair, that could cause some issues with a quorum down the road. As a matter of fact, they only had three members present at the last meeting, which was a quorum, and they were able to, to, to transact business, but we really need to get a chairman of that group appointed.
I, I did speak with Mr. Hill about if he would be interested in moving from the, from District Three representative to the chair, and he has agreed that he would be willing to do that, and so I'm waiting for someone that I spoke to, to respond, to let me know if they are willing to serve as District Three representative, and hopefully by the next council meeting, we can move forward with that.
I spoke with him also, and he, he seemed very much...
Yeah.
Like he wouldn't mind kinda sitting back.
We should have that information really soon, I, I think I'm gonna...
What did you?
Did we ever get a formal letter of resignation?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Did we get a formal letter of resignation from District Five?
Simmons.
From Simmons?
No.
So, so do we need to wait on the resignation?
We're gonna have to ask her for that, so we can...
Then position would be...
Then we can actually advocate for someone to fill that position.
Correct. And I said five members, six members plus the chair, I'm sorry.
We, we are working on it, but we need to make sure we have that formal letter of resignation before we start advocating for someone.
And we've got two openings on historic preservation, and is there any criteria other than being interested?
Have to be a city resident.
Yeah.
But they do not have to live in the historic district, so.
No, they do not. Okay, just within the city limits?
Yes.
Resident, okay.
Okay.
Do we have a need to go into closed session tonight?
Not that I know of.
Okay, this concludes the items on tonight's agenda. Does anyone on council have any comments or notions? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.